Okay, it's six o'clock. Let's go ahead and get started with our August 17th Brandon City Council Meeting, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Christina, can you call the roll?
Yep. Clark, David, Fish, Jorgensen, Cole, Parliament, Mayor Lumber.
Here. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Motion second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two sets of minutes from July 30th briefing meeting and August 3rd regular meeting. If I get a motion to approve as presented. Motion second to approve July 30th and August 3rd regular meeting and briefing meeting minutes as is presented. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bills and claims were submitted with your agenda totaling $2,271,897.91. If I could have a motion to approve. Motion is second to approve the bills and claims as presented. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There are the consent calendar. We have plat of lots 6, 7, and 8 in Block 4 of Westview Estates, plat of Track 2 in Twin Rivers Crossing Edition, plat of Lot 31A and Lot 32 in the Brandon Park Second Edition, plat of Lot 2 in Block 1 and lots 14, 15, and 21 in Block 2 of Arbers Aspen Harbor Edition. If I could have a motion to approve all.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, but I do just have a question.
A second.
Thank you. The motion is second to approve the consent calendar as presented. Questions?
Yeah, who typically approves the plats? Are you Tammy?
I do.
Do you have any questions on any of these that ever get submitted?
Nope. So, kind of the process is they submit them to me and then I review them, make sure all the line work and everything looks good and that they have all the ordinances, all the language in there that they sign off on. And then, once they print them out, then they send them to City Hall, and then I sign it. Christina signs it, and then Brian also signs it, so.
Okay, just being the new guy.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so at this time.
Is this on? Ryan and Amy Delaney, 612 South Palmer Drive. It's our wish to have the following document, which I'll be reading, recorded in the City Council Minutes. "In regard to the Pump House Project, Opposition Letter Sent to the City on July 30th, I'd like to inform the city that as I stand here today, I'm representing the following owners: 617 South Palmer, Bill and Janet Larson; 613 South Palmer, Randy and Kara Thomas; 605 South Palmer, Bob and Jenny Nelsons; 504 Country Club Avenue, Bill Gast; 508 Country Club Avenue, Dave and Karen Pick; 512 Country Club Avenue, Joe and Lisa Hermstead; 609 South Daly, Dan Bone and Janet Warnock; 605 South Daly, Matt and Casey Halberfma. Prior to 2009, Palmer Drive was through street between Chestnut and Aspen. The area flooded often due to any rain event. The design and approval of the development by the city administration and city engineers at the time were inadequate. Imagine 80 acres of water coming to a point of only one 24-inch culvert. In July of 2008, a significant rain event occurred which backed up water in both lots, adjacent neighbors, and past the intersection of South Palmer and Daly Circle. In an attempt to relieve flooding, a city employee mistakenly opened the sanitary sewer drain. The action caused sewer backup and several homes in the area. The City of Brandon Insurance paid for the damages of properties. However, we as owners had to sign a full and complete release of all claims that stated that the release is an instrument in settlement of a doubtful and disputable claim and that no liability or responsibility is admitted by any party whatsoever. Later, in November of 2008, Stockwell Engineers issued a letter to Dave Swer which outlines the drainage specifications of any and all construction on those lots. After the 2008 incident, the City of Brandon fully redesigned South Palmer Drive into a cul-de-sac. The drainage was designed to take the water west to the river under Country Club Avenue, which is not the true nature flow of the water, but this has positively aided the drainage in the area. It should be noted that a 100-year flood event is often termed used by city administration and engineers. However, only a half an inch to an inch of rainwater or springtime melt will fill the ditch and trigger the overflow design. Moving to 2014-15 time period, Kelly Nielsen Construction purchased both lots and submitted building plans which were approved by the city. When an excavator was on-site, the surrounding neighbors informed the city of the 2008 Stockwell letter, which the city had misplaced or forgot. It was that interaction that caused a sequence of events which included a lawsuit between four parties: Nielsen Construction, the realtors, the developer, and the City of Brandon. It is through this lawsuit and settlement that the City of Brandon obtained the lots through a deed-in-lie. First, as the representative of the neighbors and owners being impacted by this project, we will be respectively exercising our legal rights as property owners, just as the city is pursuing theirs. We are gathering all financial impact information specifically under the law inverse condemnation, which is a cause of action under the Fifth Amendment taking clause to the U.S. Constitution that can be initiated by the homeowner when the government entity commits an act that damages an owner's real property. To the extent an act by the government depreciates the value of your property, such governmental entity must pay you for their loss or damages. Secondly, the city attorney was informed on Friday, August 14th, that by constructing the proposed structure, the city is in violation of the current covenants set forth by the developer. They restrict the use of those lots as follows: "No lot within the property shall be used for any purpose except for single-family resident purposes, including townhome and twin home dwellings. The right to enforce covenants is given to the lot owners in the development. Thus, all adjacent lot owners intend to enforce their rights under the covenants, which were put in place to protect our property rights and values." I'd like to thank the City Council for the time to listen, gather more information, and facts regarding this project and the impacts to the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for the council's benefit, that'll pertain to item F1, Water Tower Project Update, when we get to that. Any other people that would like to address the council? Here are none. We'll move forward.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead, sir. I'm sorry.
It was. Joe Brock. I live at 1405 East Birch, up in the French Creek Edition. You guys are doing some curb repair work up there, which is greatly appreciated. I personally had some curbs that were in rough shape. I just wanted to more inform you guys that I've been talking with some of my neighbors, and as far as I can tell, no one in our neighborhood was notified that this project was going to happen. And me personally, I have half of my driveway restricted, which is fine. I can deal with that. Some of the other neighbors in the neighborhood have their entire driveway blocked off right now due to the curb being replaced. In addition, I have lost access to my mailbox during this, while this is going on, and I was not notified of that. The only reason I knew is because I get the informed delivery email in the morning on what mail I'm supposed to be getting that day, and then I didn't get that mail. When I went to the post office to pick up my mail, which is not a problem for me, the post general, whoever that works up there, said that they also were not informed that this project was going to happen because they would usually put some measures in place to help people with their mail, so. I'm not complaining because I can handle the issues, but I'm just more bringing it to you guys' information in case there's other people that are impacted by these projects and can't get their mail without being notified of the project, so. That's all I have.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming.
On behalf of the city, I would apologize that nobody was informed. Administration, please take note, and let's get that taken care of in the future. Thank you. Anyone else? Golf course. Need to hire a community staff room person, Mary Kolbeck, at $9.30 an hour. Could I have a motion? Motion is second to approve Mary Kolbeck, community room staff, at $9.30 an hour. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also, the golf course would like to hire Dorothy Estenson as a clean staff slash custodian at $18 an hour. If I could have a motion? Motion is second to hire Dorothy Estenson at $18 an hour as a clean staff slash custodian at the golf course. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a request from the Brandon Valley Chamber of Commerce to waive the fee for the use of the community room on August 25th. There was a motion to approve the waiver of that fee.
I'd make a motion to approve the waiver of that fee and authorize staff to make a determination thereafter.
Yeah, for chamber.
For the chamber.
Motion is second to approve the waiver on August 25th for the Brandon Valley Chamber and to authorize staff to make those waivers, all those waivers for the Chamber in the future. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have change order number one on the pool improvement project, adding $3,197.15 to the contract, moving the water heater from electric to gas. Entertain a motion there. Motion is second to approve change order number one, adding $3,197.15. Any questions?
How's the project going, Tammy?
Devin might have a better update on that than I do.
How's it going, Devin?
Good.
Good?
Yeah, almost everything tore out. They haven't started putting anything back yet.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions?
What's the, well, what's the projected completion date, and what do you expect to get finished this year?
The completion date is April 15th of 2021. They got a really good start, and so I fully expect them to get most of the concrete work done.
This year? And then, they should be ordering slides, and as long as all materials are available and not backordered. Hopefully, they get everything installed this year, and they just have to do some cleanup work, paint work, next year. But it should be open and ready to go next season.
Okay, thanks.
Further questions? Just to remind everybody, we're voting on change order number one. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, under administration, we have to set a date for a public hearing on cable TV franchise for Midco and Alliance. Administration has suggested September 8th. Correct. They both submitted completed applications. Unless there's any opposition to that, I would entertain a motion on the part of the City Council. Motion is second to set the public hearing date of September 8th for both Midco and Alliance Communication for their cable TV franchise. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 21-20 is to set the franchise fee and the capital grant collected from all cable TV franchise operators, which will be Midco and Alliance. As we've kind of discussed earlier, there doesn't seem to be an appetite on the part of the council to assess any fee associated with cable TV, but there seemed to be some interest in assessing a $5,000 annual capital grant.
Mayor, it's not an annual capital grant. It's a one-time lump sum with the franchise.
One time. Okay.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this one.
Okay. Go ahead, Jack.
Thank you. Lisa, can you explain the capital grant to me? Because the wording to me is totally different than what it actually is.
So, a capital grant is allowed under the Federal Cable Franchise TV Act in which the public entity, the city, for essentially recognizing use of the right-of-way by the cable franchise entities that you're going to enter into an agreement with, would pay a sum of money that the city could use for the development of their infrastructure, for their putting things out on public messaging. There's a whole bunch of restrictions on what you can use that money for. And so, it's just essentially something that the Congress decided, well, we're going to allow the cities to have a lump sum capital sum in recognition of getting this. So, you could do both, but this, I mean, they kind of do the same thing, but this is a one-time lump sum, and you get it in a lump sum, so you can use it to build infrastructure, and you don't have to use it all at once. You can use it whenever you want to use it, but you get to use it, and you could upgrade your system here. For example, putting this meeting on the cable TV system. So, you use the money for that type of work for the city. You can upgrade your cables. You can use it to extend the cable if we wanted to run the cable to, I don't know, the pool, for whatever reason, and they put a drop at a certain spot, then you can use the money to extend it. So, there's things that you can use it for, so it's just money that they would give you, and they are not assessing the customers for it. Whereas a franchise fee, you know, they would do it, you collect it every bill, and it gets to be more cumbersome, you know, a 3% or a 10% or whatever fee. You can use it for the same type of purpose, but this is designed so that you have the sum of money, you can use it right then and there, and you don't have to, over the course of 10 years, get it every month.
Okay, good. So, do we put that into a separate fund then, Brian, Christine, or how do you handle that?
We need to earmark it. We need to earmark it, keep it for capital, cable capital equipment. We couldn't just roll it into the general fund and use it for whatever.
Right. Okay. So, you have to set up another account basically in your system. Okay, thank you.
Do both of the vendors realize that this is on the table?
Right. So, they have both agreed to pay the one-time lump sum $5,000 and not assess it to the customer, just give it to the city. They're both aware of it. They both agreed to it. I asked if they were going to assess it or not assess it, because in the ordinance that we proposed, we could do up to $5,000, and so in their application, you know, we asked them, "What's your proposal? Do you have any objection to any sum?" And they were both very, immediately stepped up and said, "We are perfectly fine giving $5,000 to the city and not assessing it to the subscribers. We're happy to do that."
We had kept the franchise fee opportunity available in our agreement, but had decided not to assess any at this point, but it would give future councils that opportunity to do it.
Right. So, we have in the ordinance that every two years, that council will make a decision as to whether there will be a franchise fee or not. The franchise agreement, unless you say differently, that we enter into right now will say something to the effect of, yes, the $5,000 to be paid by a certain time, no to the franchise fees, but the franchise fees every two years will be looked at. To give the council the opportunity.
I would entertain a council member to put something in the form of a motion there. I'm assuming that means zero franchise fee and an assessment of $5,000 to each one, is what you're...
And that's what's in our package.
Yeah, you can refer to the resolution. Yeah.
Okay. Somebody want to second that? Motion is second to approve resolution... Where am I? 21-20 as presented with a zero fee and $5,000 assessment to each one. Any further questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have the first reading of ordinance 612, special tax classification. It's just a reclassification of the...
Cleaned up to match the new statute that the legislature passed and is effective July 1st.
It'll take that from 25, repeat the numbers for 25, 25, 50, 75, is it?
Yeah, it goes 0, 20, 40, 60.
80, 100 is the new one.
Yeah.
The old one was 0, 25, 50, 75.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah.
Motion is second to approve first reading of ordinance 612. Questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D5, we have the Stone Ridge Phase 4 Preliminary Plan that needs approval from the City Council. Entertain a motion? Motion is second to approve the Stone Ridge Phase 4 Preliminary Plan as presented in your packet. Any questions from council?
Yes, Mayor. How many households is involved here? Tammy, do you know of them?
61.
61.
Any further questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Administration is bringing a plan in September for the tree branch disposal. Moving on to streets, we have a transit agreement with Rural Office of Community Service, Rocks, for $31,300.
If there was one minor addition to the contract on page 62, we added the requirement they have to have workers come.
So, motion to approve with the addition? Motion is second to approve the agreement with Rural Office of Community Services to perform transit services in the city of Brandon for $31,300 annual. Any questions?
So, really, nothing's changing?
Nothing's changed. It's just a different provider. InterLakes provides the service right now. Scott Fink, who was the transit coordinator for InterLakes, is now working for Rocks, so he'll be operating our transit system. Everything stays the same. The employees down there stay the same. The operation stays exactly the same, same cost. Actually, I think it's the same contract that we have with InterLakes.
So, the folks that use the service just continue on like they've always, so there's no disruption to them?
Correct. Who owns the buses? Do we?
We do.
How many are there?
Three.
Okay.
Further questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E3, we have an application for a TAP grant, resolution 20-20. It's on Redwood Boulevard to, and Chestnut, to apply for a grant to assist in...
Shared use path.
Say again?
For a shared use path.
Short, shared use path, yes. Walking path, bike trail, something like that.
So, Tammy, is that going to tie into our bike trail plan that we've, Park Board's been working on?
Yes. Yep. That would connect the east side with the rest of the town.
So, do we have an overview, a plan of the bike path? Because I've never seen one.
So, we're working through that study right now. We are actually using NPO funds for most of it. They pay for about 80% of the study, and then we pay for the other 20% or 18%, and they help us with that plan.
And who is that?
We would contract with CCOG, the Southeastern Council of Governments, but the money actually comes from the NPO, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And involved in that is the city of Sioux Falls and Harrisburg and Lincoln County, Minnehaha County. And they have so many planning dollars every year, and so we requested this last year that we would do the shared use path study along with the transportation study. So, between those two studies, that was about $250,000, and they also reimburse part of my wage, so.
So, do we have any, so this is just all for studying?
This is just, well, so that is just for studying. This would be construction dollars, this TAP grant. This is the Transportation Alternatives Program, and that's administered through the South Dakota DOT.
Okay, so Tammy, from Sunshine Avenue, where we just finished paving the bike path, right? There's that section there that comes up?
Yes, yep.
So, we don't have a connection, though, where that's going to go to hook back up to Chestnut as of now? Is that what we're just still discussing? That goes behind the creek and eventually the new school?
You know, so there's been ideas thrown out there, but nothing concrete. I think it's important to go through the study first, and then let's get down into phases and see what's a high priority.
So, do we have any ballpark of what our 20% could look like? And heartbeat of that question would be, I mean, if it did come back, just absolutely astronomical. Are we committed with this grant to move forward?
Okay, let's back up. That 18, 20%, that was with NPO funds. I thought Jack was asking about our big-picture plan for bike trails. On this TAP grant, this is just the sidewalk or the bike path for Redwood and Chestnut. So, the number, since that's a gravel area right now, that road would have to be improved, and so it needs to be surveyed and designed, and we would do that all at one time, and that's why the number looks really high. And if they give us funds for this section, they would give us up to $400,000. And then, yes, we would have to use it within three years.
Motion to approve. Motion is second to approve resolution 20-20. Further questions?
Yeah, real quick. So, what's the timeline on all of it? The study and then possible construction or redo of plans, let's say, let's put that way.
Hopefully, we get the study done in the end of 2021, and we're kind of working through Park Board on that study. And then it'll come before City Council. We'll probably give a presentation and then formally approve it. As far as the TAP grant, if they award that to us this year, we would have to do contracts and everything the next year, so 2021. 2022, we would do the design and some of the environmental, and then 2023, we could possibly do the construction. So, it's a much longer process. There's a lot more red tape, but it makes a lot of sense for us to try to apply for this one.
Okay, so this resolution is just authorizing us to apply for it?
Right. We haven't even sent an application yet.
And we're just trying to get the process going. I mean, we've got a gravel road, for God's sakes, out there right now.
Right.
It's a long ways away. Any further questions? Any further questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have change order number two in the core area project, which is an addition of $79,187 to asphalt the city hall back parking lot. There is a motion to approve that. Motion is second to approve the core project Phase 1 change order number two, adding $79,187 to pave the parking lot behind city hall. Questions?
I have a question. So I guess I'm just kind of trying to make sense of this in my head. The media reported that we're looking at a city hall, I know we looked at plans, but then we want to throw $80,000 into a parking lot, and then we were told that we're going to piggyback this on the core project, which we don't know where the funds are at, so I'm just trying to understand why we, if we are looking at a city hall, if it's five years, why are we throwing 80 grand of the taxpayer dollars only to rip it up and redo again? Why are we putting it on a project that we were told that we're close on funds trying to complete? So that's my only hesitation with this. Why are we making these change orders if...
The core Phase 1 is, we've already got the financing in place for that, so that's taken care of. We could say, I remember talking to the council a couple of years ago, saying, if we're going to stay in these facilities for any amount of time, five years or more, we're going to have to invest significant dollars. Every time it rains, every spring, this room floods in that back wall from water coming in, because if you haven't noticed, the steps out there, the door is much lower than the parking lot. So we can sit and do nothing, and we're going to continue to flood the council chambers. So this is an opportunity that we can get something done with decent bid prices to pave that parking lot.
Are you going to lower it, then, so it doesn't flood, or are we going to redesign it?
So there are a couple valley gutters that are planned, so they'll direct some of that flow, and then a little bit of storm sewer that connects into main. So we're not going to fix the whole problem, but we're going to make it better.
I also agree that sometimes it seems like we're putting a Band-Aid on something, but if we're, if we were talking about a new city hall next year, yeah, maybe they could suffer through that and do it, but I can tell you, working down here, pulling into this parking lot every day and seeing the condition of it, especially during the winter time or during the freeze thaw period, it is a mess, and if it's going to take us three to five years to get into the city hall, that parking lot needs to be done.
I would agree, except I would say it's a little bit more than a Band-Aid, I think it's more of a casting of a broken limb here. It's pretty bad back there. Further questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Christina, call the roll, please, on the...
Hi.
David.
Hey.
Fish.
Hey.
Jorgensen.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-2. Item number five is to approve pay app number five on the, to soukup construction on the core area Phase 1 project in the amount of $1,221,188.43. Entertain a motion?
I'll move. Second.
Motion is second to approve pay app number five. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six is a Corson railroad crossing contract that has been presented to the city, passed through the Development Foundation, to contract with Civil Design, Inc., for $10,000 engineering fee to look at the railroad crossing up in the industrial park, bid specs, plans, so on and so forth. Entertain a motion to approve? Motion is second to approve the Corson railroad crossing contract with Civil Design, Inc., for $10,000, as presented in the board packet. Questions?
Yeah, Tammy, tell me about the agreement with CDI, if you would, please.
So they would resurvey it, and then put together plans, and then bid the project out for us. They would also help with some of the permitting. So there are some design questions to work through yet, but this would at least get it started.
Is that a do not exceed price with them?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Further questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, a South Dakota Highway 11 study advisory team roundabout support letter. Administration has drafted a letter to support a roundabout...
Review.
Review, out where you turn to go to the golf course, that area, I don't know, highway.
At Aspen and Split Rock, that intersection.
DOT is undertaking a corridor, DOT is undertaking a corridor study from Redwood down to Highway 42, so as part of that, we would like them to take a look at that intersection.
Entertain a motion on the part of the council to submit that letter? Motion is second to submit our letter of support on the, to the South Dakota Highway 11's advisory team study for a roundabout at Aspen and Holly Boulevard.
Yeah, we've got a typo on there. Should be heard or killed instead of heard of killed.
Thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need to declare a 1998 Dodge 2500 pickup as surplus property on behalf of the city. Motion is second to approve the surplusing of a 1998 Dodge 2500 pickup. Any questions?
Does anybody remember 1998?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Water Tower Project updated. Mr. Delaney presented some information tonight. Did receive correspondence from the city attorney that she needed a chance to review some of this information, which she did not have time to do this afternoon, so I would be inclined to let her review the information that was presented by Mr. Delaney, and any action is delayed or postponed until she has a chance to review that information.
I would make the motion to table it.
Table it.
Is that what you need, then? Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion is second to table any action on the Water Tower Project update, and have the city attorney review the information that was presented tonight. I would assume so. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
So, Mayor, I think I'd like to make another motion, too. Maybe it's not even a motion, maybe it's more of a directive if we all agree, but in the new possible litigation and giving, obviously given, is Marshall time to review this, wouldn't that also be a good time to review or look into the possibility of having the valve station relocated over to the golf course? I don't think we've had any information on that possibility, besides just kind of hearsay?
Directly administration to look into that when they're going into the information that was presented tonight, in conjunction with Lisa, so we'll just go with that. Item number F2, change order number three on the Main Avenue Interceptor Project, it's a deduct of $6,926.47 on the, down by Casey's, where they eliminated a temporary road that they were going to put in on the original project. It's elimination of that, and then we added sidewalk down across from the lumberyard here down in city hall, so the net of those two is a deduct of $6,900. Entertain a motion to approve that change order number three? Motion is second to approve change order number three, deduct amount of $6,926. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Pay app number 11 to H&amp;W Construction on that interceptor project in the amount of $326,791.59. Motion to approve? Motion is second to approve pay app number 11 as presented. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F4 and 5 is the pay apps number one and two for the water meter replacement to Ferguson Enterprises for a total of $47,910.54. I'd entertain a motion to approve both pay apps? Motion is second to approve pay app one and two to Ferguson Enterprises. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. New business? Anyone have anything to bring up at the council? Financial statements included in your packet tonight through July?
I was looking for the balance of, you know, what our reserve balance is. I couldn't find it.
Look it on, it's like the first page fund balance report, I think.
I must have just missed it.
$7,479 of the general fund.
Thank you.
This is a reminder, we haven't paid anything out for the pool project, which was going to draw that down.
Any other new business on part of the council?
Refresh my memory quick on the pool project, how much is that?
$1.6 million with the construction and design.
But it didn't come in more, did it?
Yeah.
I would have entertained that. I entertained it, you did it. Motion is second to adjourn at 6:41 PM. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Project meeting on Thursday, 5?
5 PM, yep.